All right, welcome everybody to our May 17th board meeting. We are here for a committee of the whole meeting. We are going to start our meeting tonight by doing roll call. I will start with Director Decker.
Over here.
Director Smith.
Here.
Director Sproll.
Here.
And Director Zavala.
Here.
And I am also here, so we are all present. So tonight's meeting is a committee of the whole meeting. This is our opportunity to kind of look ahead and look at some items that are going to be coming up at our June board meeting. We are just kind of reviewing them. It's our opportunity to ask questions and get all of our answers before we look to take action on these items in June. So just as an FYI to those that might be tuning in, we are not taking action on these items tonight. We are just reviewing them for our upcoming board meeting. I am first going to turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Snell, for anything that he might have to report.
Thank you, Director Barrows. Don't have a lot of information today, just a few FYIs. Last week was the Vancouver School District Foundation. It was the first luncheon. It was the first time that we'd been in person in some time. And so grateful for the foundation and the support that they provide in a lot of different ways. But I would say a really important highlight is the family community resource centers. And the support that we're able to provide community and families through that is it would not be possible without the foundation. And all the board directors were able to attend that luncheon last week. Just a real high point, I think, of the week and wanted to acknowledge the foundation for that. Also, next week, we do have another all-staff connect. These are our all-staff meetings. We've had five since I've kind of come on board. This will be our fifth. And this one is focused on planning for next year and really gathering input from staff. We had a conversational exchange online to get ideas. And then we're going to come back and talk about those ideas and really try to prioritize. So really grateful for our staff who want to get involved in some of the input. And, you know, just thinking ahead, how can we be our best for students in the fall? And then finally, you know what? Our next board meeting will be right before the graduation season. And so we have a number of students to celebrate and schools to celebrate. And I know board directors are planning to attend as many of those as they can. And so we're just really excited to celebrate the class of 2022. And then finally, pandemic planning and response. You know, unfortunately, we are seeing a tick up in the case rates. And so we're continuing to monitor that with Clark County Public Health. I have not heard any changes in terms of mitigation strategies or anything of that nature at the state level or any updates to the Department of Health. But I know we're continuing to monitor that in the community and in our schools. And so I think that is all I have for the superintendent report, Director Barrows. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Don't think there are any questions.
Thank you.
All right, so next on the agenda, we are going to move into our committee meeting. And I believe, Dr. Snell, are you going to share the screen? First up, we are going to be reviewing some of our contracts. So I believe this will be Brett going over these with us.
All right, thank you, Director Barrows. We have six items, as you can see from the agenda. We'll lead off with a couple independent contractor agreements that we renew annually or we recommend the renewal of annually. Both of them are backstops for some of our specialized needs of our students. When we can't secure staff internally, we always prioritize staff serving our students, Vancouver staff serving our school. But some of these hard to fill positions, we do need to have that backup plan of contractors to make sure those needs get met in the event we aren't able to hire. The first one is with between the district and signing resources and interpreters. And it's for American Sign Language interpreting services. And the recommendation is that we approve a renewal of this contract in an estimated amount of $750,000 for the 2022-23 school year. Maybe I'll do the other one and then we'll pause for questions because they're so similar. The second one along those lines is a recommendation to renew the contract with Fox Hire LLC. And Fox Hire LLC, as you can see, provides occupational therapists, physical therapists, nursing, speech-language pathologists and psychologist services as needed throughout the year to augment our own staffs in those areas. The recommendation is that we approve a renewal of this contract in an estimated amount of $265,000. And both of those contracts would be funded by our general fund. That point, I'll pause for questions on either of those. All right, hearing none. Again, those are pretty routine annual processes. I believe you'll see some other vendors that provide specialized services too, as those contracts come up for review. Moving on to our recommendation to approve purchase agreement number 2022-023 with Bernhard Golf through an agreement or through a master contract with King County Directors Association. And this contract would provide reconditioning of both the JV and varsity baseball fields at Skyview High School. I know there's been some questions and answers throughout the board and the community over the last month or two. So it's our recommendation that we approve KCDA bid for reconditioning those two fields utilizing the Bernhard Golf contract in the amount of $315,285 plus Washington State sales tax. This would be funded by our general fund because this was not built into our bond plan in 2000. The measure was submitted to voters in 2017. The planning for that would have been primarily in 2016. This need was not identified and prioritized at that time. Questions on the contract with Bernhard Golf through KCDA to complete the reconditioning of the Skyview High School baseball fields? All right, we'll move on.
Actually, wait, I think Kyle, where is your hand up first?
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't, I was looking down on my paper. I didn't look at raised hands. I'm sorry, you guys are too polite.
Kyle, why don't you go first?
No, you raise your hand first.
So, um, I, is this to do more of the same as to what was done previous?
So we do have AJ on the line, but I think I can answer that one. But if, as the conversation progresses, we may want to activate AJ on this. No, the first phase of work on those fields was to improve the drainage. And we also did the same work out the softball fields at Skyview High School. And that work on the softball fields has been a success. The problem with the baseball fields is we haven't been able to do the additional maintenance after that drainage work was done because it was done later in the year before the, right before the rains came, basically. So the drainage work is done. This would then restore the infield, what they call top dressing, which is just bring in a lot of sand to smooth out the ruts and the divots and the holes. And then the infield would be entirely rebuilt, basically with clay and turfis, which is a well-draining material specifically for baseball fields. AJ, did I forget anything? Did I forget anything, AJ, that might be relevant?
No, that's, that's, that's the scope for this portion, that's correct.
And it, it, that, that alone is supposed to make those terrible swampy fields playable?
So the drainage has worked very well on the softball fields, which was a, we were able to use this year. So I guess the term playability has been used. And as we know, playability is a subjective term. We believe that it's going to be comparably playable to all of our natural grass, natural grass, baseball and softball fields around the district with these improvements. It does not mean that there's a guaranteed no rainout policy, unfortunately, because all of our natural grass facilities are subject to, you know, weather suspensions when it's really nasty.
Yeah, rivers and, rivers are grass field. I just know that a river does not have any of the same issues that Skyview's had for 10 years. So I may, I may give, I may give AJ a ping later and ask him some more detailed questions.
Yeah, what makes, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, go ahead, AJ.
Yeah, what makes the drainage so critical at Skyview too is the soils that are at Skyview underneath are just like heavy clay soils. They just, they haven't been draining well. And so just to, just to reiterate kind of what Brett said, when we, when we included the under drainage of the softball fields, I mean, we just saw a drastic improvement. We did a couple of site visits at Skyview when it was really raining, you know, earlier in spring. The outfield, I mean, on both fields is in really good shape as far as drainage. What we're trying to get to now is that leveling out, you know, just the clumpiness because they haven't been maintained over the last several years.
All right, I'll ping you with some more questions, AJ. I don't want to keep everybody here because I do have some, some concerns, but I'll send you a couple of questions. Because, yeah, because I know this has just been going on for so long. And we're a big baseball family. We're not at, we're not at, we weren't at Skyview. But I just know, being in the baseball community, that this has just been so ongoing. And I just want to make sure that if we're throwing another $300,000 at it, that we're going to have resolution. So I'll just, I'll send you some questions.
Okay.
So I'll, I'm going to follow up. I'm curious about the timeline for this contract. Obviously, summer months are a great time to do these types of outdoor projects. And how critical is June approval?
Pretty critical, whether, what, regardless of if we were going synthetic or natural, just the lead time for the materials would be critical to get the contract in place so they can get back to order. I think I'm worried that if we, you know, we didn't, if we didn't get a contract in place until July, with that much work taking place, I just, I get concerned that it could carry over into October and November. And then they're not going to be able to complete the work of the infield that needs to be done.
So I just want to add, AJ, thank you for all of your responses. I've had lots of questions and you've been very diligent in answering many rounds of questions. I feel a lot of community feedback around Skyview baseball fields. And I know there's a lot of energy from parents and students and future students and just sports fans. I guess my hesitation with this continued investment is I'm curious what our long-term vision is with this plan. Because it seems like really long-term playability leans towards synthetic turf. So I'm concerned about making another big investment. Because this is like, I went back through board docs looking at contracts. And we've made several investments in the Skyview grass fields. So I just, I wonder if there's an opportunity to have an alignment of what the long-term vision is. So then we can figure out what the short-term investment is. That's, that's kind of where I am. I'm, this is the wettest spring we've had. As a baseball fan myself, I've been subject to rainouts, et cetera, this spring. And I know that this isn't the norm. But I am a little worried about pouring more money into these fields if it's not our long-term vision. I don't know if that makes sense, sellers, but.
Yeah, that definitely makes sense, Kyle. And it's something that the team's considered as well. The challenge of the long-term vision would mean that we would most likely need to go through some sort of bond or capital levy type of process. Where certainly we're hearing from Skyview that, as Kathy mentioned, we have grass fields at River and we have grass fields for baseball anyway at Fort Vancouver. You know, if you talk about different sports, we have different sized gyms that allow one school to have all their teams at one time to practice and other gyms that don't. We have swimmers that go to locations for pools. So it's part of a larger conversation around facilities. And whenever we, at least historically, when we've done that, we've tried to rally the community around the bond process that allows us to kind of do some of those big lifts on our resources. And that takes some time. And so looking at, you know, the, as Brett referenced, some of the projects from the 2017 bond that are finishing up, right? And you guys are approving those, you know, and still we're in the midst of some of those. You can see that we're talking, you know, potentially if we went through a bond process to do some of this, that, you know, five, six, seven years potentially. And then that requires at a bond level a 60% plus approval rating. So there's some risk with that as well. And so, you know, it's just that these are difficult kinds of decisions. And as we discussed, Brett shared, you know, for whatever reason, this wasn't identified as a priority back in 2016-17. And now it's becoming more of a priority. And so team is trying to come up with solutions to number one, get baseball at Skyview next year, right? So that they can play on their campus while also thinking about the long-term vision. So it is something that we appreciate the board questions on. And I don't think it's just like a clear, easy pathway for them.
No, I appreciate all that. And I do recognize that the investment, I think some of the feedback we've received is really towards an investment that would have to be a bond program investment. That's just the reality of the budgeting process. Where I am struggling is, I guess, continuing to put money into fields that we don't have that guarantee because we don't know, you know, a crystal ball to see what the weather is going to be. And it's a big investment. As I continue to hear feedback from different stakeholder groups, I think there's less of a concern about games at this point than there is around their regular practices. And the fact that they even have to travel for practices. And I've just, in the last week, I've been pretty overwhelmed by parents with safety concerns. And as a parent, three years away from a driver's license, I understand not wanting my kid to be commuting on I-5 at rush hour to get to baseball practice on a regular basis. So I just, when I, when I talk about long-term, I also talk about, I also mean, let's then back into what that short-term is. Like, is there a way to use these funds to leverage some sort of practiceability on campus? I don't know. I don't know if there's creative problem solving. I just, I'm a bit apprehensive about committing this amount of money towards these same grass fields that have been a problem for what I could figure out just through research last night, six, seven years. And it's a big amount of money.
Yeah, I think that, the, looking at the softball field is one test of change, right? Like to see how that's, that's played out and vetting this vendor and pass success around that. And then, you know, we, in order to get the practice opportunities at Skyview, we do need to do something to those fields. And in particular, the varsity baseball field, the JV baseball field, we think could be playable. And there's some decisions at the program level, whether, you know, they want all the teams to be at one facility or not. There's some decisions, you know, we do have programs that make the decision to have student athletes take the bus to practice. And that's something at the school level that if we wanted to require that, we could. You know, not everybody, that's not a popular decision for everyone sometimes. But there are structures that we could put into place to address safety concerns, if that's something that the board would like to do. I think what, what I'm trying to address and what I've asked the staff to come up with is, like, how can we get these, you know, a situation next year where they can practice and they can potentially have games? And that's the package that's before you today. And, and I think, as Kathy mentioned too, you know, if you have more questions about that as well, like, we want to vet everything that we can for you. I think, as Brett said, like, it's pretty difficult to say 100%, like, these fields are going to be playable, not knowing what the weather holds in some of those conditions. But we do feel like it's going to make an improvement. And so, you know.
Can I ask what, well, I can all follow up, I'm gonna.
No, I think, and you're welcome to continue to ask questions too. I just want to make sure to the other directors that, you know, we have had some engagement and we will make that available to everyone so they can see the Q and A back and forth as well. So please ask if you have more questions, though.
Is the soil the same under the softball fields as it is? Like, I mean, do we have like good reason to think that we'll have the same success with the baseball fields? I mean, is there a difference in the soil underneath softball and varsity? Because I know, being out there and I've walked the fields, it seems but, because one is way closer to the road, the softball fields.
The, so what, the, so what, the clay soil is kind of throughout the whole Skyview site. In the first underdrainage, when we started, and Todd, Todd had phased it in, you know, into three phases. And we'd started with the softball fields back in 2012. But yeah.
I think the other thing, just for the board's consideration, I know you know this, like, we wouldn't be presenting something to you for this amount of money if we didn't think it was going to make a positive impact. Like, you know, certainly there's concerns about it, but there's concerns about a lot of our facilities and wanting to upgrade. And even though we have great facilities, people have ideas about improvements. And so we're really thoughtful about looking at the budget that we have and trying to make those dollars go as far as we can. And, you know, like you, you mentioned, Kyle, a bond package would be able to, you know, do some amazing things. And you're seeing that come to fruition with a later item around Kiggins Bowl and the improvements made there. And historically, we've been able to kind of add on, but it doesn't help us in the short term. And so this is a short-term proposal that we hope would impact and create a better experience for students next year.
So I guess that's kind of one of my questions, going off of what Director Sproll just was asking about and what you had said. Is this kind of in the vision of where we're going? Like, is this a short-term solution until we can do something more long-term, like turf? Or is this, I mean, is the hope that this will be a long-term solution? And we wouldn't need to do, you know, what, what is kind of the long-term vision, I guess?
Yeah, I think the long-term, Tracy, is really dependent on what our Director Barrows, on what a community will support through a bond measure. You know, like, when we look at our neighbors to the north in Ridgefield, they've really struggled with passing a bond. And so historically, Vancouver's been successful in putting a package together that does kind of meet needs that are, have been addressed. And so if this is something that the community has a lot of energy on, like moving towards more turf fields in our community, then I think that that would be the long-term vision. But, but trying to predict a bond or a capital levy is really difficult. So this also is a solution, like, Skyview hasn't been a good example. But as Director Decker said, that River has a different experience with their natural fields. Fort Vancouver has a different experience with their natural fields. And so, you know, we would like to think that investing in this and ongoing care for the fields, you know, regular care would help them be at a point where that we can play on them very consistently. So it's kind of, I know it's like, I'm kind of not necessarily answering your question, but in this world of, of bonds and levies, like, it is dependent on the energy of the community around these things. And, you know, unfortunately, school districts tend to pass bonds and levies because there's a great need in the community. When there's not a great need or a lot of energy around that, it's really difficult to pass these things, so.
And even when there is a great need, such as our neighbors to the north, they still don't necessarily pass them, so, yeah.
There are some other structures too, besides a bond, like a capital levy that the board consider around, you know, improvements to facilities. And those are tools that districts can use. And so as we go through a levy renewal process this year, those are things that the board can consider. And those can be for, you know, field enhancement, things of that nature. But they could also be for transportation issues. It can be for infrastructure issues like roofs and HVACs. Now, we're in a very favorable position with some of that infrastructure because of the bond and because of SRFs, being able to upgrade HVAC and other things. So we're able to actually address needs like this. Whereas maybe other districts don't even have the capacity to consider this kind of an investment because lead or HVAC or some of those priorities around safety just have to be addressed.
And Dr. Snell, maybe I just, in the highlight too, that the, the under drainage work that we invested in last year has been a success. And at the baseball fields, and we've had a number of stakeholders and consultants out there and we've walked the fields in the rain. And they are draining very, very well and are drier than they have been ever, probably at this time of the year. What we're, what we're, the concern at this point is that playability of the outfield because it hasn't been maintained like we do all of our other varsity fields with our top dress program. And so it's, it's that next step to remove any of those, just to remove the unevenness of the ground and, you know, for safer play. But we are draining well. So this is dressing them up and getting them back into a condition where they, where they would have been if we had drainage prior.
I would just like to say that I appreciate the other directors' questions. For me, this is something new and I didn't know the background on all of this. And so I look forward to AJ's responses to the other directors' questions. And just to also have more clarity, not only for us, but I think, as Dr. Snell was saying, for when we do have the levy and all that, I think this information will help.
I don't want to short-circuit any conversations. I'll pause just for another sec if any other questions come to mind. Otherwise, we'll move on. All right, well, thank you for the, the feedback and the questions. And so we'll continue to advance that Q and A. So everybody is on the same page on those investments. Moving on to our last two items here are, again, more routine-type items. These are two projects that have been completed and inspected by our group and meet our satisfaction in the specifications of the original contract. And so, as you know, there is a formal process by which the board has to accept the work to begin the process of closing out and releasing their retainage and some other procedural things. So the first one was bid number 2021-024. And it was for tenant improvements at Geyser Middle School. As you've read, these were alterations of the locker room, some FCRC spaces and conversion of some office space for conference room purposes. The contract was awarded to Columbia Cascade Construction and in the amount of $572,509.84 plus Washington State sales tax. And it would be our recommendation that you accept that contract and bid as completed. And I'll just read the other one real quick and then we'll pause for any questions. The second one was purchase agreement number 2021-039. It was another KCDA contract to, awarded to Field Turf USA. And this was for Kiggins Bowl Discovery Middle School turf fields. Again, the vendor was Field Turf through a ACDA contract. The amount for those two turf field installations at Kiggins Bowls slash Discovery Middle School was $790,665.05 plus Washington State sales tax. Any questions on the recommendation to accept those contracts and bids as complete?
Brett, I just want to highlight that when you look at this bid and the cost of this bid for turf, and then you look at the previous bid, which is about half of the amount for the discussion that we just had. and then you look at the previous bid, um, which is about half of the amount for the discussion that we just had on Skyview, I want to point out that, um, this is replacing existing turf. Um, so the, the fields are already all prepped. Everything is ready and there's a lot of work that goes into that part. So it's not as simple as, um, well, can't we just do this as Skyview and solve the problem? Um, so I just want to note that, um, and, and make sure if there's any questions about that, that we could address that.
I appreciate that, Dr. Snow. And the other thing I failed to allude to, but I think this board knows, but I'll say it explicitly. These were fun, these were funded by the Capital Projects or Bond Fund, um, as a result of the 2017 prioritization work. And then AJ, I, I don't know if you can cover Claire or confirm my recollection, but to Dr. Snell's point, didn't we find with the Skyview estimates that the prep and the engineering work before we actually bought and installed the turf was just about the same amount or even more than the cost of the turf itself?
Yeah, the site work is just a fraction more expensive than the actual turf.
So thanks for, thanks AJ. And again, thanks Jeff for raising that point because yeah, this is just half or, or part of the puzzle if we were to start from scratch with the site.
Brett, I might have missed it, but did we cover number four, item number four? I, I think we might have skipped over that one. If there aren't any questions about item five.
Oh, thank you. No, I did. I flipped too fast. Um, I think I flipped twice after the, the good conversation on the Skyview field. So, uh, thank you very much. Um, yeah, the recommendation on that item four is to approve an amendment to the Professional Service Agreement between LSW Architects and the District. And this relates to the Ruth Bader Ginsburg Elementary Project. And as we've talked about on a number of change orders, unfortunately, um, we had some permitting problems that created the need for some change orders and delays in timing. We've had some supply chain issues, some unavailable, inavailability of fiber cement siding, which required some redesign work. And then all of this really conspired to delay the project, which extended the engagement with LSW to do their um, uh, construction administration. They, they review the contractor's work throughout the process. And so we've had to extend their engagement because of the protracted construction period. Um, as some of these things have conspired against us. Um, thankfully, we're still on schedule for March of 2023, which will be well in advance of the school year, obviously. Hopefully, we don't have several more months of delay. We think we're past all that. Um, but nonetheless, we do need to, we, we're recommending that we extend and amend the, um, LSW contract so they can see us through the, again, extended construction cycle. The amount on that is $195,940. And again, that would be funded out of our Capital Projects Fund, i.e. bond funds. All right. Sorry for skipping that originally. Thanks for the reminder.
All right. I think we are ready to move into the next portion. It looks like there are no policy items we need to review. Uh, so the next section that we will be looking at for June Board Meeting are teaching and learning items. And so I believe, uh, is that Darcy?
I think I'll, I'll just start and then if you have questions, Darcy's available. The Instructional Materials Committee did review, um, um, some requests. Uh, they just met, um, I think they just met yesterday or the day before to finalize some of the, the work. Um, that is attached with the, the curriculum titles and the committee's recommendation. Um, and so we would love if there's any questions either today about any of those titles or also in follow-up. Um, we can talk about, uh, what the IMC, the Instructional Materials Committee, how they came to their recommendations. So. Okay, sounds like that we're good on that one. Um, if you do want to reach out, I know Darcy's happy to provide information if you need it, uh, related to any of the titles. Do you want me to keep going, Director Barrows? Okay. So the next one is a recommendation for out-of-state travel, Magic Music Days, Columbia River High School. Um, this is for, um, next March. Uh, and so they are, um, I believe using fundraising and Booster Club, uh, to address the costs. So the cost is covered. It's just more about approval for this trip. And then finally is the annual, uh, approval of membership in, uh, the Washington Interscholastic Activities Association. Um, and so there is a requirement that board takes action annually through a resolution um, so that we can participate in, um, those events. Um, and so that's on the agenda for June as well.
All right.
Okay.
Any, could, any questions from?
I just wondered about the, I just have a quick question about WIA. Did I see somewhere that they're redistricting again?
Yeah, there are some redistricting going on. I, I don't believe it affects us in Southwest Washington. That it is more about consolidation of some geographically very spread out districts that, um, they're looking to, um, resolve some of those issues. And so my understanding is that, um, you know, any of those resolutions have to be approved through the WIA bylaws um, with representatives voting, uh, for or against that. Um, typically we support, um, those resolutions if the groups that are affected are supportive of those. So.
Right. Okay. Cause I know they, it was, they just redistricted, I thought, just a few years ago and now they're redistricting back. So I just wanted to double check. I didn't think it affected us, but I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
One other note that I think on WIA just popped into my head that I think you're aware of, but our students broadcasted state championship games this year. And so that was a huge opportunity and our kids really did a great job. And, um, we're just talking with the Executive Director, Mick Hoffman, the other day. And, and there's a lot of schools that are really interested in that now through our students, um, kind of pioneering the way. So, um, those partnerships are, are awesome for kids. Um, so I want to just highlight that.
All right. With that, um, the only other item on our agenda is Board of Directors Reports. I don't know if any directors have anything to share or update. I did just want to point out, um, typically on the fourth Tuesday of the month, we have a study session, um, which would be next week, um, that is canceled for this month. Um, so we will not be meeting. So our next regular meeting will be in June. Um, June 7th, um, which is a week earlier than usual. Um, and so, um, that will be, um, our regular business meeting. And I believe, yes.
I just wanted, Dr. Snow mentioned the Fort Van, the Foundation for Vancouver Public Schools Luncheon. I just wanted to highlight the student performers because they were pretty awesome. Um, we saw students from multiple schools. That group of Lincoln Elementary students was pretty inspiring. So. It's a highlight of my week last week. So.
Perfect. All right. With that, uh, it is 6:09 PM and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.